All right, good evening and welcome to our city council this evening. Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton-Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Voice.
Here.
All right, would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Please join me in the pledge which would be read by John Childs, Councilmember Ward 1.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the approval of minutes of December 4th, 2023, and December 11th, 2023, oh, sorry, December 4th, 2023 council regular session as proposed, and the approval of the minutes of the December 11th, 2023 council special session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. I'd like to have Mr. Funches and whoever else you would like to have come up for the International Human Rights Day proclamation. All right, we got that right now. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas on December 10th, 1948, nations from six continents came together to adopt the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. This extraordinary document affirmed that every individual is born equal with inalienable rights, and it is the responsibility of governments to uphold these rights. In more than 430 translations, the declaration recognizes the inherent dignity and worth of all people and supports their right to chart their own destinies. On the anniversary of this human rights milestone, we join together with all those who are willing to strive for a brighter future, and together, we continue our work to build a world our children deserve. And whereas, we want our children to lead healthy lives and pursue an education without fear, and when citizens are empowered to pursue their full measure of happiness without restraint, they help ensure that economic growth, stability, and prosperity spread, and communities will flourish. Protecting human rights everywhere extends the promise of democracy and bolsters the values that serve as a basis for peace in our world. And whereas, it is our obligation as free people to stand with courageous individuals who raise their voices to demand universal rights. Under extremely difficult circumstances, often at great personal risk, brave human rights defenders and civil society activists throughout the Cedar Valley are working to actualize the rights and freedoms that are the birthright of all humankind. We will continue to support all those who champion these fundamental principles, and we will never stop speaking out for the human rights of all individuals at home and abroad. It is part of who we are as people and what we stand for as a Cedar Valley United. Whereas, we honor those by continually working to protect the personal dignity of all Waterloo citizens regardless of race, gender, religion, or non-religion, ethnic background, sexual orientation, national origin, or ability, and to ensure social, political, and economic freedoms and opportunities for all. Now therefore, I, Mayor Quentin Hart, do hereby proclaim Sunday, December 10th, 2023, as the official recognition of International Human Rights Day. So that's saying a lot. Mr. Funches, could you please talk to us about this proclamation?
The International Human Rights Day proclamation is very special. Several people came together to try to create a framework by which, you know, human rights abuses could be measured, and I think they've been pretty successful with that all around the world. And of course, it trickles down even to local economies like Waterloo, the Cedar Valley. And so we're just committed to trying to do the best we can to protect the personal dignity of all individuals here in the city. And so we thank you for the acknowledgement, and we thank you for your encouragement.
Reading this proclamation really hits home to, for so many reasons. And one thing I'll tell you, standing in that gap, standing up for people is not an easy job, right? You, you come under some personal attacks and things happen, but ultimately, it's about for the greater good of our community. So we thank you for the proclamation. We thank the Human Rights Commission for your vision and fighting for the least of these in our community. And I know we'll continue to stand and do that furthermore into the future. So, thank you, sir. All right, it is now oral presentation time. Your opportunity for public comments, your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what's on your mind.
Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond Street. At the last meeting, I was touching on due process and how it has not been used in my life, pretty much. And I'm glad that you touched on human rights because next year I plan on bringing in some human rights violations that I have been affected right here in the city of Waterloo. And where I have gotten my information from over the years is what I did was countless hours at the Drake Law Library and the State Capitol. So when I bring information to you, it's not something that I'm just saying. I've been called delusional through this, and not this setting right here. This goes back way past Mayor Hart. I started with this concerns that I have with the roof administration, so that takes us way back. But one thing that has happened that has me here today is I have a court date tomorrow where the last couple of police chiefs and administrations have failed to act on this. And what it is, is procedural due process. The procedural part of it is not in the city's hands that I'm discussing. That fell into the Marionette Harris Estate, case ESPOR 006003 in Buchanan County, Iowa. The connection here is it was all done from here, okay? The procedural due process was violated not by the city of Waterloo. And what procedural due process is it minimizes substantially the unfair or mistaken deprivation by enabling a person to contest the basis upon which a state would deprive them of protection, interest, or land or anything else. Where that was violated with me was not through the city of Waterloo, but when I brought it to the city of Waterloo and they failed to investigate what Judge Kelly Ann LaCarre and the other judge that was there, his name will come up in a minute. What they'd done was procedural, they violated my right to procedural due process by me not filing or receiving a notice to appeal the sale of my land or signing a family settlement agreement in which they said I did, that was the violation. Dereliction of duty is what they've done. And that's when a person purposefully or accidentally fails to perform an obligation without a valid excuse, especially an obligation to which is their job. Now that falls not just on the judges, but when I went to the police here, when I've been to the county attorney. Tomorrow I have a court date in Buchanan County. Before then, I'll meet with the county attorney, Brian Williams. Hopefully at that time, I'll be able to take it to the judge because what the judge is trying to do up there is get this closed. But like I told him, as the administrator, I can't close it and there's criminal action in it. I mean, I, I could, it could very easily be done, but it's wrong.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tim Vogel, I live on Carolina Street. I guess my rep would be Ray Fuss. This is about an intersection on Hammond and Ridgeway. And right now, we need a roundabout because it's a four-way stop, and there's a lot of people that don't know how to use it or legally doing it right. And there's been a lot of accidents, and there's a lot of heavy traffic in the morning and the evening because there's an elementary school nearby. And I was wondering what I have to do to try to get the funding for maybe a roundabout, at the very minimum, some lights, so we can prevent this and future accidents. And it gets very congested.
All right, is, is, I'm, I'm sorry.
I just, because I know Ninth Street's got one that they did, so I thought we could get there to alleviate congestion.
So I, so I'll have Mr. Bennett get your information. I know you guys can communicate from there. He's over Public Works, which is also over our Traffic's Department as well. So, Mr. Bennett, if you would get his information, he'll come out and join you out outside, unless you want to stay for the whole meeting, you're more than welcome to do so.
No, that's fine, I was just told, I was just told how to do this, so thank you.
He'll meet you, he'll meet you right outside and get your information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Potter, 1416 West Fourth Street. I'm a trustee of the Grouse, and I am here tonight to read you some letters that children have written me from the Irving School. Says, "My experience at the Grouse Museum was really important to me because it was my very, very first time, and I got to go with my very best friend ever. My favorite parts were the Victorian house and the one-room schoolhouse. If I could go back, I would visit the one-room schoolhouse because it is my favorite, and because it was funny, and it was fun, also a little strict. In my opinion, my favorite part about the Grouse Museum is when I went to the Star Room, that was a third room that was a beautiful room. I loved it. I wish I can go back. I love that place." This is a little fellow named Luis, and I could hardly read his writing, but he wrote, "The first thing I like in the museum is the tank. The second thing I like is the mansion, and it was huge and also creepy. Also, I like the bow on the wall and the plane. Also, the building I liked. The tank, if I would go back, I will go to the big tank to the inside of it. I like to get bow. Bow is the highest one." I'm not sure what bow is, but I think it's some kind of a instrument. "At the fun run, we beat the mayor. And after we got to go to get a," and I couldn't read his next word, "and I hit a bunch of flies and I got buried in the foam pit." Do you remember that one?
Yeah, I remember losing.
"My favorite part was when we went to the tank and we went in the tank, and when we see the missiles and when we see the helicopter. The thing I like most about the Grouse Museum is the Imaginarium. In the Imaginarium, we didn't get to go in the Imaginarium. The something thing I like is the plane in the Planetarium. This time, we got to go into the Planetarium. My experience at the Grouse Museum was really important to me. My favorite part was the Planetarium and one-room schoolhouse. I would love to go back and visit the World War II. My favorite part of the Grouse Museum was the tank. I also think the Planetarium and the Sullivan Brothers. The Planetarium especially, though. The Victorian house was weird. It was kind of like it was haunted. I like the, I like the Grouse Museum when we went to the tank also, and when we ate lunch, and the last thing when we went in the house." These are children's comments from Irving School. Irving School is located in Church Row, and you know that is a very depressed part of town. There are many children in this neighborhood who would love to go to the Grouse Museum but cannot afford to. Their parents cannot afford to take them. They can't take part in summer school, they can't take part in anything. So tonight, in the spirit of Christmas, I am giving you each an envelope with my name on it. I didn't put a stamp on because I didn't want to see it get thrown away. And then it's, it says, "In the spirit of Christmas, I would like to share the cost of a membership, cost of a single membership, a donation or a contribution for summer camp, five dollars, three dollars, a thousand dollars, I don't care. Please support the Grouse."
Thank you.
I'm Larry Stummy, I live at 1008 Lois Lane, Waterloo, and I'm a Lutheran pastor of St. Paul Lutheran Church in Cedar Falls. It's the last city council meeting of 2023, I believe, and it's a good time to review the past year to identify your accomplishments, your failures, and set goals, so that in the coming year, we can improve the lives of citizens of this community affected by your actions or suffered by your inactions or mistakes. On many things, you have done well, and we thank you for the stability of our, of our town, but I must point out your failures and concrete examples of serious problems, examples that demonstrate serious and basic failures for the black residents, especially of the north side of the river. Just over seven months ago, on May 15th, at the city council meeting, Dr. Michael Blackwell and myself, unless prohibited by health problems, we appeared for each of your council meetings, and we came with a simple request. Respond aggressively as city leaders to the exposed truth that Waterloo-Cedar Falls is one of the worst cities out of the 383 American cities for black people to live. At the May 15th meeting, we brought examples of the reality of the 24/7 Wall Street finding and, and asked you to respond. These pictures are examples that were shown to you at that time. First of all, was the home on Second Street destroyed by fire in August of '22. Next was the dilapidated and dangerous apartment house abandoned for at least 10 years on Lafayette and Vinson. Then we brought to your attention the abandoned and very dangerous former St. Mary's Catholic Church and the school on Fourth Street, now owned by the city. And we also pointed out the 30 years abandoned, 23 acres formerly of Chamberlain's factory that has been found by the EPA to be emitting cancer-causing TCE and PCE in the groundwater adjacent to the site. This site is also known by the city. It appears from these examples that 2023, in that year, you have failed on these matters. Thank you.
I'm Michael Blackwell, I live in Cedar Falls. Many, if not most, people do not want to live in residences and neighborhoods that are in disrepair. Often, they become discontented after seemingly unending delays. Inevitably, a lack of trust develops and ramifies into a feeling that nothing they do or say will result in any improvement in their circumstances. Then when officials assert they are transparent, but scarcely clarify to the people why stated goals go unfulfilled, they lose all confidence and wallow in despair and apathy. Take, for example, some matter we brought up in May of this year, the monstrosity of St. Mary's School campus. We referenced a news report on KWWL in September 2021 wherein anchor Ron Still announced that the alumni and friends of the, of the school removed all they could salvage, and the buildings would be demolished in 2022. Just think how heartened people were to hear that, especially those living in its vicinity. Also imagine how disheartened they became when it did not occur because asbestos had to be removed first. This summer, it was reported in this chamber that the dilapidated, dilapidated structures would be torn down by the end of this year. I wonder if in the next 13 days, neighbors will be exhilarated to see the eyesore gone. Transparency includes confessing an inability to redress the scores of dilapidated buildings because the length of time to address them has been outrageously prolonged. It means to seek diligently to do what one says would be, be done by the timeframe established. It would not make any sense to become governmental leaders if they earnest to make the city much better, especially for the disadvantaged, were absent. Hence, I presume that serious conviction exists. Although it is challenging a lot of the time, I remain hopeful that the manifestation thereof will become more evident in deeds rather than in words, much sooner than later, or dare I say, never. So may your holidays be merry, and your new year be healthy and productive, and let's get on with business when January comes around. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council and mayor or city staff? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts. Hey, man, did you have something on the agenda or not? Okay, what item is it? Laporte Road, so once Laporte Road comes up to be voted on, I'll make sure I will, you're talking about number four, right? Yeah, so once that comes up on the agenda, I will, I will call on you to come up at that time. Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
So tonight is my last council meeting, and I will not try to break my previous record of nine minutes and 43 seconds. But I did want to say that it has been a distinct honor and privilege the last four years to serve alongside council members who have fought for all of Waterloo over the last four years.
I had a presentation for you at the end, but this is your floor, if you want it right now, my friend, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I think Reverend Dr. Blackwell said something important, which is that deeds are more important than words. And that is what I have always strived in my four years of public service to do. I am proud of the accomplishments that we have achieved over the last four years. I am proud of the stands that we have taken, and I regret no votes. I regret no conversations that we had because they moved this city forward, even when they were at times uncomfortable, maybe especially because some of them were uncomfortable. I wish the very best to all of you, as well as Councilmember-elect Simon, in the new year. I hope that you will all continue the hard work of representing all of Waterloo. To city staff, you have been a, a pleasure, it has been an honor to know you. Thank you so much for your dedication. You are, in so many ways, the unsung heroes of Waterloo. I am eternally grateful for my service. Thank you all so very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, well said. You got six more minutes left.
I'm gonna call it.
All right, thank you. And then a little bit later, a little bit later, once we get towards the end, I had a special tribute, so. Yes, counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Quickly, I just wanted to say Midway, which was a blight in one of my neighborhoods in Ward 1, is down. So thank you, Noel and your staff, for making sure that he had everything done within the contract allotment times. He beat it, he was on day 13 of 14, but he did it. He got it down, and I went and saw it myself, it is down, that blight is gone. A new building will be, uh, being put up, I believe he has a year, but I don't think it will take that long to get a new duplex up. So thank you again for your work, and I look forward to taking on a few more buildings in that area soon.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to also say that, that blight on Fourth Street is gone, which I'm very, very grateful for. Also, I've had some conversations with Noel about the St. Mary's Building, and hope, my hope is that Noel will have an opportunity to share the reason for the delay, and happy holidays.
Noel, did you want to talk really quickly? I know Rudy's waiting for some.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. You know, one of the goals always for the city is to look at other funding sources besides our local tax dollars. We're fortunate to have some CDBG funds available for the asbestos and demolition of the St. Mary's site. Unfortunately, with the federal funds, there's a longer process to get through some of the, the actions. We recently had a historian, archaeologist out at the site by HUD standards to go out and look for anything that he saw that may determine that there's something underground that not, we're not aware of. He did send that through with no recommendations for further work other than during the demolition, they'll be, they'll be mindful of watching for it. So hopefully, we'll get the approval from HUD soon and be able to start the work.
Great, great, thank you.
But it won't be within the next 13 days.
I, I wouldn't think so, no.
Okay. All right, anyone else, counsel? I, I just, I had a, I had a meeting this past week with the folks at CN Railroad, and I can't believe, I, I had an opportunity, I don't know when in history, as elected officials, we had an opportunity to actually go over there and to see the operations. As some of you know, we had tried to partner with the DOT to take a look at, you know, two things. One, the possibility of getting a, a planning grant to potentially move the majority of the operations from the railroad out to a site that's not so much centrally located in a neighborhood. And secondly, to also take a look at a redevelopment plan for the surrounding area as well. Had a good meeting, that grant has been submitted, so we'll wait to see what happens for that planning grant. But, you know, it's just some things that I didn't know with the railroad, and that, that is the largest rail yard that CN has in the United States, which was kind of a surprise because it's sat there all these years. And the only thing some of us really know, and me included, was that, that horn that goes off all times of the day and, and the blocking of the railway, which we know is an environmental concern for so many people that live in and around the area. So, you know, very proactive meeting to take a look at the uses of air compressions in different parts of the rail yard to be able to help ease the trains to go through. But it's the first time in the history we've had this much open lines of communication. So I'm hopefully optimistic, and we know for years this has been a nagging problem that has impacted so many people's lives. And we look forward to in January or February, the hope is to actually have a community town hall meeting with their governmental affairs people as well, which would be landmarked because it's always been, we were here first, and this is important as much as bringing the neighborhood together and the people together to kind of figure out what's happening so people understand what's going on. So looking very forward to that conversation in the next few months, but also for the community to learn more about what they're doing and for them to hear the impacts they have sometimes. So very positive meeting, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comments closed. Oh, sorry, dear, public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Bells Payment 1A1 for December 11th in the amount of $2,235,491.05. And for December 18th of 2023, in the amount of $6,935,725.26.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, coun- That motion has been made with the second, council. Uh, this is an electronic vote. Please cast your vote.
Mayor.
Sir.
I vote yes on all of them, but abstain on item seventeen.
All right, all right. All right, so the, uh, has been approved unanimously by all council members and an abstention on number seventeen due to familial, um, thing. So, all right. We also have, uh, Frank McCaw, Melvin Whitwer, Craig White, Randy Miller has, uh, two reappointments to the Memorial Hall, uh, Commission. Uh, we have, uh, Brian Schrader, uh, as a, um, it's a wastewater operator and waste management, uh, pending physical and testing, as well as Brian O'Connell as plant maintenance mechanic as well. So either one of you here? And you are?
Brian O'Connell.
Brian, it's a pleasure to meet you. We look forward to a, a long, uh, being a long part of our family here at the city of Waterloo. And congratulations on your new position. All right, could someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by Castle Storage, Waterloo, number one, to rezone approximately five point eight seven acres from A one agricultural district to R two CZ conditional zoning district to C two CZ conditional zoning district to allow for the outside storage at twenty-five fifty-one Logan Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to Castle Storage? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive, file or written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time and ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a request by Castle Storage, Waterloo, number one, to rezone approximately five point eight seven acres from A dash one agricultural district and R dash two C dash Z conditional zoning district to C dash two C dash Z conditional zoning district to allow for the outside storage at twenty-five fifty-one Logan Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, do you have questions on this item? Second time. Sir. All right. Uh, could, this, uh, is an electric, electronic vote. Uh, please cast your votes. All right, uh, the, um, motion has been unanimously approved.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, council questions? Uh, this is also a, um, electronic vote. Yes. Uh, that has been approved unanimously.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, once again, it's an electronic vote. All right, all members, uh, of the council approved that, so move forward. Thank you. Uh, could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
It's delayed tonight. We need Waterloo fiber. Uh, it's a delay tonight, so we won't slow up, slow up the up, so we'll call it out. Um, yes, Mr. Childs.
Thank you. I, I move to receive and file, uh, proof of publication, public notice, and that is for a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate an existing fifty-foot sanitary sewer easement generally located at the north end of three three zero one Greyhound Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak, uh, to the vacate of a existing fifty-foot sanitary sewer easement? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Move to close the hearing, receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
A motion been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to receive and file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate an existing fifty-foot sanitary sewer easement generally located at north of three three zero one Greyhound Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, uh, questions on this item? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
Mayor, thank you. Sir.
I move to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I can make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate approximately sixteen hundred and thirteen square feet of city right-of-way owned, city-owned alley right-of-way in the M one light industrial district located adjacent to fifty-four Lane Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I can make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate approximately, uh, one thousand six hundred and thirteen square feet of city-owned alley right-of-way in the M one light industrial district located adjacent to fifty-four Lane Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions, concerns, or? All right, that, uh, motion was made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I can make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the said ordinance.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number four?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the acquisition of property right-of-way, permanent easements and temporary easement for the Laporte Road reconstruction, phase one project, generally located on Laporte Road between East Charles Road and just north of Bob Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Um, and we have a gentleman here. Uh, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And let us know your thoughts. We didn't forget about you.
Hi there. We are the owners of South Town. Russ and Deb Yumblot. And I guess what we're trying to do is just a clarification of what's, when they're going to start and where we're, how we're going to get access. And you, it's not only us, it's the two motels and, and Ament behind us to get to them people. And the way I see this whole thing, they're going to tear the whole thing up down there by us. And when I had called planning engineer here six, eight months ago, I was told they were going to come to the first street and crossroad, which I believe is Grim Street, and they were going to stop there. And then they were going to come up the Hawthorne and come back this way. And this, now where we were, we're going to be the last part, and they were going to two-section that. So as of right now, I don't know where we're at or where we're going to be with all this. And how long is it going to be down? To our business.
Could you state your name and address for the record so we'd have that?
Russ Yumblot, Russ and Deb Yumblot.
And what's your business address at least so we know?
Twenty twenty-six Bob Street.
All right. Um, Mr. Knutson, uh, Mr. Anderson, either one. And your question is, your question is, what's going on, right? What's the delays and what's happening?
Yeah, we got a business involved here. We've got to figure out what's going on.
All right.
And how we're going to get access to, uh, to it and how we're going to get trucks in and out. I mean, there's a lot.
Building. Um, we are hoping to work with Withams and you and Ament and the hotel to be able to provide a temporary access so you'd be able to come down the port and drive right around the end of construction into your parking lot, and everybody would be able to share through that. That's what we are looking at at this point. We still have to have those conversations with you and some of the other property owners to discuss that, but that is the option that we are looking at at this point. And then construction staging, I don't know, Michelle, if you have any, want to come up and discuss maybe some construction scheduling as far as the staging and where we're going to start or look to start and where you'd be at necessarily within that.
So if you could move back from the podium and, uh, allow, uh, Ms. Sweeney to come up and address some of the concerns.
Michelle Sweeney, AECOM here in Waterloo, Blacks Building. So the project for phase one will be from Shawless, where the roundabout stops. Um, basically up to the driveway, the south driveway that abuts your property, um, for Withams. We will phase it, so you will have access at all times, so that will, you will not close during construction. We're going to make sure you maintain access. So whether that's a temporary access across Withams, um, driveway and interiors, or if it's to stage your driveway half the time, um, that's something that we'll have to negotiate with you as part of our working with you, um, in the Withams property. So in order to do that, we have to get the easy easements, and this public hearing, um, allows us to start that conversation with you to acquire easements and discuss those types of things as far as project. So, and then, uh, the motels, I think you asked about as well, and those will be maintained too. Um, if they have access off the baggage road, um, that goes around the mall, they will, um, have access that way as well. So that access will maintain. And then during construction, we're also going to have temporary, uh, detour signs similar to kind of what you see out there for the Shawless Road, for the K O A and other buildings out there. You will have, um, a South Town business sign on the stage. So if you cannot access from, um, San Martin down the port, um, we will divert them, um, via the baggage road, or if we can't do that, so. The baggage road is the one that loops around the, um.
Crossroads Boulevard.
Yep, Crossroads Boulevard. So, and then you would come in via either Grim or Bob, um, depending on how that stage is. But we would sign it for you.
And so, Michelle, tonight is the first part of these easements so that you can begin to have conversations with the businesses and communicate with them.
Yep.
Uh, and throughout this project, uh, how does AECOM communicate? Do you have, you know, bi-weekly communication, but how can these folks know? And will they have access to be able to talk to you, uh, directly with numbers and stuff?
Yes, and we have, um, the, the city has a Facebook page set up for this project already. It's, um, Laporte Pass Road. It's, I think that, um, we have social media out there for that. Um, so if you want to message us, that comes directly to the engineering team. We also have a Laporte Road, I think, email as well. There's a number of different ways, um, that we are available. You can call up City Hall. You're more than welcome to email me directly. I do have a business card I can give to you. Um, and I'm more than happy to talk with you outside if you have additional questions.
So tonight is the foundation of being able to go and talk and work through how you're going to provide access, but you're not going to cut off access one hundred percent. You will have signs up that will divert traffic and stuff directly to the business, right?
One of my concerns is, is directing people around through the crossroads into us is not going to work because we all, we got elderly people. There's no way they're going to run through the crossroads to come and see us.
Yeah.
That's going to kill us.
I, I can show you our, um, staged construction plan.
So, so you're giving them a card and you guys will have some conversations to try to help alleviate some of these problems, and you'll communicate that with Jamie, uh, as well, so. All right, thank you. Right, is there, are there any other questions? And what they're referring to, uh, the city of Waterloo received, uh, about twenty-plus million dollar grant uh, for the reconstruction of, uh, La Porte Road area from the, the DOT. And, uh, the, the blessing is that, uh, it's going to be a, a incredible road. Uh, if you can put your mindset in that of like moving University Avenue on a scale to the Laporte Road area to try to connect the access roads, the access and access roads. We have two access roads in some parts of University, I mean, um, of Laporte Road. And it's been a challenge for years, congestion, but, uh, in the end, there's going to be some disruption. And so the gentleman and his wife came up to try to talk about, you know, and work with AECOM to see how we can help alleviate some of the challenge they may have in that area. So it's going to be a good project, uh, but it won't come without its impacts to our businesses and surrounding areas. So is there anyone else that has a question about this item? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make, uh, a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed with the Laporte Road reconstruction phase one project to make final selection of the location to authorize funding for the public improvement project and determine that there is a reasonable expectation the city will be able to achieve its public person, purpose, comply with all applicable standards and obtain the necessary permits and authorizing the use of condemnation procedures for acquisition of property interests in furtherance of the project objectives and to establish the amount of just compensation.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
And, and maybe Michelle can answer this, or I would appreciate it, since I'm going to be working with Ward Two, keep me in the loop on this.
Okay.
But my concern is the K O A and, and the Birch Project out there because the roundabout itself almost put that K O A, uh, convenience store and gas station out of business this year. They ended up laying off people. They ended up shortening their hours just to Monday through Friday, seven to five. And they rely on, through traffic on the port road, especially with Hawkeye students. That's a, that's a, that's a big, uh, a group of people that frequent that, that filling station. And we, we've caused undue hardship this, this whole past year, uh, with their campground. Their census was down just because of how difficult it was to get in there. And, uh, I'm just afraid that we're moving forward at this end, right off the, off the start and the future damage that we could do to, to the campground at the convenience store and filling station.
All right. Anyone else? So you want to communicate with Michelle?
Uh huh.
So, okay, all right. And I mean, let's, it's a, it's a hardship, definitely. Is it a good project for the city and for the future of that in court and that entire corridor? Absolutely. Um, so, uh, Michelle, uh, if you can make sure to reach out to the councilmen and the rest of the council too, uh, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and ask for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located south of ninety-nine Mosley Street to Leon V. Mosley and Rhonda M. Hodges Mosley in the amount of three hundred dollars.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the, uh, audience that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Okay, going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I would like to move to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I would like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located south of ninety-nine Mosley Street in the amount of three hundred dollars to Leon V. Mosley and Rhonda M. Hodges Mosley and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yeah.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for fiscal year 2024 Titus Midland Pump Station and Force Main Project Contract Number 975.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is now open. Is there anyone that has comments about this item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions on this item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to receive, file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Waste Management Department.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Madam Clerk.
The engineer's estimate for this project was $6,531,597.73. Our first bidder was Ports and Construction of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $7,279,728.68. Second bidder was W R H Incorporated of Nana, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $6,184,087. Our fourth bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Rhinebeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $6,584,845.50. And our final bidder was Boomerang Corporation of Anamosa, Iowa. They provided 5% security. And their bid amount was $4,117,354.20.
All right, thank you. All right, could someone take one, two and three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving an agreement with Tolemy of Boston, Massachusetts for data integration and inside software application and rental registration and workflow management software in the amount of $47,500 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number two is a resolution approving a constructions agreement with Waterloo Waterworks Board Board of Trustees in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024, the Port Road Improvements Phase One Contract Number 1016 and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number three is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with E N Engineering LLC, formerly Magellan Advisors LLC, in the amount not to exceed $1,107,300 for the project and construction management inspections and engineering support services for the fiber backbone and fiber to the home network project implementation in calendar year 2024 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone questions on this item, on these three items?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street on number one was what does this do for the city of Waterloo? Don't we already have something like that? I keep seeing stuff about software applications or software stuff. Are we going to a different company? Don't we already have something like this in play? And number three, when we did the fiber optic stuff, was this not something that is already in play? Why are we having to keep adding to the cost of the fiber optics? Speaking of, I have three fiber optic boxes in my yard from Waterloo Fiber.
All right, thank you. You know, good questions. Now, number one, are you finished, sir? I'm sorry. I didn't want to cut you off.
No, I'm waiting for an answer.
So, yeah, the city of Waterloo and that guy right there, there's a lot of software and different applications all throughout from our police department to our inspections department to our rental registrations, but there's always going to be some type of software applications that you'll see. The unique part about this one is that it ties all of those pieces in together to be able to have a system that we can take a look at rental houses and properties all across this entire city. We could figure out if, you know, we've had landlords that even come and ask, you know, was there a violation on my property? Was police, were police called to my property? And so this software, of course, is for internal city workings to be able to take a look at properties and the life of a property. And it'll all be in one area. So folks don't, in the city, don't have to lose some of their software, but this puts it all in one place that you can access with a push of a button. But the good thing about this software is also what they call front face. And that means if a property owner or if a city council person wants to take a look at what's happening on a particular property, you know, they can see more than just whether or not there's been property taxes or those things. But they can take a look at the life of their property. If you have a property where someone is buying up properties and there's a whole lot of bad things taking place on those properties, you can take a look and see all the properties that a particular person owns. It puts it all right there for those in the public to be able to utilize it, but also for our city staff to be able to accurately follow with one software program everything that's happening there.
Do you should get rid of some of the other ones?
Possibly, possibly, right?
Hopefully.
And that's, that's, and that's, that's the, that's the thing about it. But once we get it in there, then we can really find out. It'll take anywhere between three to six months to fully have it integrated. And if there's some redundancies, we'll take a look at it at that time as well. With regards to number three is Eric here, but this is all part, this charge is all part of the entire cost of the fiber project. So this isn't an additional expense. This is another phase of what needs to be done for the project. So it's not, we spent this amount of money and this is extra. This is all part of the entire expenditures with the fiber project.
So it was in the planning?
Yes, sir.
I guess I didn't figure that it was going to cost that much money in the initial package that was presented.
Oh, yeah. Consultants and overlooking and looking at these projects and digging up your yard. It's expensive.
You're going to come seed it for me?
Yeah, you know what? You, if you got some seed, I'll come over next year and help seed it.
Seed, I'll see you tomorrow.
No, not tomorrow. And then you can come by and help me too because your yard looks really nice and I need some tips. All right, now I'm gonna hold you to that. I'm serious. All right, you got it. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I am just very excited for the, the fiber program to, to get off and get started. I know that it's definitely one of those pieces that folks have wanted. It is going to make us competitive. It is the sort of future-focused project planning. And I'm just very excited to see that it continue. I'm also very excited to see that Tolemy Software, I was very impressed with their work session this summer. This is going to help us look at the whole picture. So rather than playing whack-a-mole with a variety of problems that we face, we can start to get at them holistically. So I'm very much looking forward to these moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take? Let's do it. Four and five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Move to adopt the following resolution, the resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated in the amount of $179,800 for construction administration and project inspection services for the airline passenger terminal parking lot canopy project at Waterloo Regional Airport and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number five, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with H R Green Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa in the amount not to exceed $25,000 in conjunction with the Waterloo Pavement Management Plan Update Fiscal Year 2025 through 2031 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there, are there any questions on these two items? Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Six and seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving an intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement with the Iowa Department of Human Services and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And number seven is a resolution approving nine F Y 2024 quarter three and quarter four event capital hotel motel tax grants with one additional capital grant in the amount of $90,400 as recommended by the Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these two items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Just want to thank Experienced Waterloo for selecting some great receivers of these grants. It's going to be another good year. So thank you again.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number one in ordinances?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time. An ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended, city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10 dash four dash four, approving a request by the city of Waterloo on behalf of H and A L C to rezone approximately 60 acres from A dash one agricultural district to M dash two P planned industrial district located east of 2950 Newell Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that may have questions about this item? Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I want to thank Mr. Anderson for getting back and, and to me for answering all the questions and getting the wetlands conflict straightened out.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yeah.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to move to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yeah.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, before we go, we have, we have a couple presentations to make. And first I would like to call up Mr. Keith Caspary who tried to slip out that back door. I've never seen counsel, counsel and voice move that fast in my life. But Keith is retiring from the city of Waterloo. And we want to make sure that you're a department head that is set at these council meetings Monday after Monday. Department heads that, you know, are, I think, Mr. Greider mentioned that are a lot of the unsung heroes within our community are department heads who never fully are appreciated and definitely not by the salary, right? But, but I'll, I'll tell you, my experience within the city of Waterloo, I have the fortunate opportunity to work with some of the greatest people that you can potentially possibly work with. And not that, you know, Keith, if you know Keith, Keith is all airport, right? He'll talk about airport. He loves airport. He's one of the most passionate people about seeing our airport be successful and seeing people have that mode of transportation that they can rely on. But one thing about Keith, Keith is an incredible human being. If you are stranded or you don't have a way to get somewhere, if you get spam that comes to your email address saying, we need gift cards. It's spam. Keith is the first person to call to say, how can I donate or give to whatever the cause is? And so, yes, incredible worker, hardworking, but incredible human being first and foremost. And it has been a pleasure to work with you over the course of the years. I wish you tremendous success. Whatever you decide to do, golf or whatever it is, you're going to be successful of it. But I want to say, God bless you. I appreciate you. And I thank you so much for all you've done for this city. So. All right, and I have, ooh, you got the first, first ones with the new, new, new logo. Wow. This is pretty cool. And we'll send the gold watch out in a couple of weeks. A role with not E X, with the X, right? But a city of Waterloo, Iowa, Community of Opportunity Appreciation Award presented to Keith Caspary in appreciation of your service, dedication and loyalty in serving the citizens of Waterloo as the Waterloo Regional Airport Director November 2014 to January 2024. So congratulations, my friend.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. It's been a real, real pleasure. And for all my colleagues, department heads and board members, past and present. And I got to say one thing to the citizens watching at home and in person. The city is just packed full of good employees. The municipal employees never get the credit they do and deserve. But department, department, department from department, top to bottom, just rock solid employees. They work hard. They're the guys out there plowing the snow at 3:00 AM in the morning, doing the job that it takes to run the city and make the city successful. So thanks to everybody. Thanks to the residents to have their continued support of, of American Airlines and, and Waterloo Regional Airport and the city of Waterloo overall. It's a great place to live. And my wife, Donna, and I, we're, we're staying here. We're not moving. And because we like Waterloo, we like the Cedar Valley and this is our home. So thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And congratulations and.
So thank you so, thank you so much.
I'd like to call up Mr. Mr. Greider, please. Right, and Mr. Greider, Councilman Greider, this is his last council meeting. But there's something that I wanted to read really quickly. And it's called "The Man in the Arena." "It is not the critic who counts, not the man or woman who points out how the strong man or woman stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man or woman who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasm, the great devotion, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement and who at his worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." And that was by Teddy Roosevelt. And I'll tell you, there's so many accomplishments that this counsel and Councilman Greider has pushed to help us move this community forward. You know, there's no time like there was during COVID when we all really didn't know where we needed to go, what we needed to do. But it was his efforts to work to push forward mask mandates and try to help us to be able to push forward through the largest pandemic that we've had in the history of the city. Jonathan has been on the front lines when it came to climate and energy and trying to protect our communities, speaking out for the voiceless, been an incredible advocate for pushing human rights forward within our city. And that's not an easy job, right? And that's not an easy job, right? Because, you know, how dare him, right? Uh and there is a lot of sacrifice and a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that may have an impact on on personal well-being, that people have no idea about the sacrifices that have been made. But I am proud to call you friend, I'm proud to call you brother. I thank you so much for all your incredible efforts that you have realized and that you have done with the City of Waterloo. And so you are a a very young man with a whole lot of life ahead of you. But I just want to say, God bless you, thank you for your leadership. Uh of course, we are, we are here for you and I know this, it won't be the last time uh that we see you. Uh and we want to say an appreciation award presented to Jonathan Greider and we thanking you for your dedication of years of service to the City of Waterloo January twenty twenty to December of twenty twenty-three. Now, you said your statements a little bit earlier, but you probably have some more to say.
You know me too well, Mayor, that's uh actually the quote that I have in my office downstairs, so I think it's appropriate. Yeah, this is, this is an odd moment, but it is a moment. Um and I'm incredibly proud to have worked with all of you, um and the other council members who are no longer uh here in council with us. Um we've done really, really good things. I am very excited to see what you all accomplish uh in the next two and four years, uh depending on how long your terms are. Um I guarantee you, um you all know me, this won't be the last time you hear from me. Um it is the end of a chapter, but it's not the end of the story. So thank you all very much for your friendship, for your leadership, uh and the very best to Waterloo. Thank you.
Mr. Simon, we welcome you, we look forward to you jumping right in here and and uh we're going to make sure that whatever's available to to get you off the ground running, uh we are here to make sure you have everything that you need. So we look forward to this new year uh working with you as well and to everyone else, uh happy holidays. If you celebrate holidays, if you don't, be safe and be merry as well. Uh and thank you, thank you, everyone, and this entire council for all your incredible work and to our incredible city staff, this is our last meeting of this year, so God bless you, thank you. Mister Mayor Protem?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, we adjourn.